I mean, uh, I guess probably.
Oh.
It's the only.
He gets the more.
I thought. Was your teacher.
Um.
Where are you?
You find it.
No.
All that.
So.
I know, um, if I don't really want it, I'll be off. Just couldn't make happen.
Uh. No. But the bar bringing up.
I haven't talked before. I don't know. I don't cheat. I don't get passionate. The kind of sentence. That part is. Put something on.
That what?
If you're not doing. You're not doing what? Then it's it. But if you're like. No. Okay, twenty three years. At the same time, I understand. I understand right here is. But at the same.
But all.
Well, this is.
So anyway.
Well.
Go sit down.
I feel like that.
See that one. See guys.
Oh, look at that big binder. Oh my goodness, you guys.
Well, I.
Uh.
Okay, I think.
So. We're gonna get through that. Oh.
I didn't see. What did you say? That's just. I'm sorry. I love you. Sorry. We were trying like. No, that's not it. Ready. No, that's not. Yeah.
Thank you. Now, where are we?
It's a lot like.
Oh. Yeah. Okay. This is your.
Yes. Yeah, yeah. Yes, yes, yes. We were playing copy. Yes.
Okay, all right. Yeah.
I can.
Uh. Where's it? I know. I was there. I think. I think.
Yeah. We're.
I think.
Okay. Oh, great. We didn't take this way.
I know. It's been.
Yeah. Yes, yeah.
Yeah, ha, ha, ha.
Right. Okay, brother.
Nice. I'm for you.
Good.
Thank you.
I'm just. I'm gonna wait. You. But. Right, right. I'm. Yeah.
Okay.
Oh. A few. Oh. My. It's quite. I.
Yeah, he's.
That's some price. That's what I'm trying to do. I just told you.
That's right.
This is what I just called the one.
That's.
Eight thousand.
It's already at seven o'clock.
Oh, she's. You know, I know that's over. I told you. That's what I'm doing.
Yeah, yeah. I'm just saying. See? I'm gonna let myself.
Oh, right.
Higher and better. It's okay. I mean, I'm. Yeah.
I think that's. I'm correct. Seven. One. I think. Okay. On.
Bye. Bye.
I think they have. Yeah.
Hey.
All right. Bye. Awesome.
Um, Jeff? Right there. Jeff? Okay, thank you. That's all right. It's not gonna be a rock and roll lottery. It's gonna be difficult. Um, ladies and gentlemen, uh, we're gonna start the meeting. Welcome to the Hawaii County Council Committee on Finance, the forty-second session. Today's date is October second, two thousand twelve. We're in the council chambers in Hilo. The time is ten forty. Please turn off cell phones, pagers, and other mobile communication devices, or at least put them on the silent mode. I am now calling the meeting to order. Uh, can we get the doors shut, please? Thank you, staff. Um, I wanna tell you what we're gonna be doing, because we've got some, um, issues to take care of. Mr. Pilago's meeting, um, the government relations, is going to be at one o'clock. We must start immediately at one o'clock, because we have a person standing by on the mainland in Washington, D.C., that will be conferenced into the meeting. So I must, uh, recess my meeting to let that happen. Then we'll recess Mr. Pilago's meeting and come back to the finance committee. So we have a lot of testimony here, and I don't know what we've got, any other options, I'll find out here in a second. So I will be calling for the lunch break at eleven forty-five, or as close to that as I can possibly get. Um, and the reason for that is we've got to go to lunch and then get back and make sure all of us are here, so we can start the meeting at one o'clock for the Eastern Seaboard. So, um, I'm gonna take testimony as fast as I can. You all have three minutes. You do have your three minutes. You may discuss anything that's on the agenda. Please be kind to us, okay? I will be calling you up here in Hilo two at a time. Um, let me start with the, um, uh, Kona office. Do we have anyone to testify in Kona?
Sheriff Ford, we have no testifiers in Kona this morning.
Thank you. Um, and Waimea, Mr. Hurd.
Uh, good morning, Sheriff Ford. Uh, we do not have testifiers for finance this morning.
Thank you. Barbara in Pahoa.
Hi, good morning, Sheriff Ford. We have no testifiers for your committee this morning.
Thank you. Then I am going to start here in Hilo, and it looks like we have over twenty testifiers right now. And I'm gonna call you up two at a time, so I want, as one of, as you come up, one of you will testify, the other will be waiting at the other mic. As soon as the person leaves the testimony, the testifier table, I'm gonna ask the next two. I will call you two at a time to come up. I want you to come up, even if it's one at a time, I want you to fill in that space. I wanna keep this moving as quickly as possible, get as many of you before eleven forty-five as I possibly can. Our first, um, testifier is Kalani Lyman, uh, regarding the Papiko Mill Beach condemnation. He's representing himself. The person, uh, Corey Harden, will be after him, same issue. Then Tony Geteras, followed by Iopa Mauna Kea. So as one person leaves the testifier, the next person I call, and then I will just keep calling people in between. So, um, Kalani Lyman, um, what you do is push the button on the bottom of your, uh, thing, make sure the red light is on. Give that, give your name first and what issue you're, uh, talking about. So, Mr. Lyman, please start.
Uh, my name is Kalani Lyman. I'm talking about, uh, access to Papiko Mill. For six generations, from my great-grandfather to my more Punas now, we've been using the trail along the gouge to go down to the beach with unlimited access until a few years ago, when they put up the gate. There was always a trail there. It wasn't as big as what it is now, but it was a steep, narrow pathway that we had access to the ocean. I worked for Seabrewer. My grandfather, my great-grandfather, worked for Seabrewer down at Papiko. The plantation always gave us access through that trail that we used to do. Had another path through the mill for the community and another path by the guardians, the community guardians, to go to the beach. I was once friends with these people when they first moved to the community, but then the waves changed. They kicked people out of the river and they come see me. She says she owns the river. She stopped certain people from going down to the beach. One of them is a nice gentleman here today helping me, and he stopped at the gate, not allowed to go to the beach. She puts boulders in front of the abandoned boarding house next to my great-grandmother's house, where I used to weedy. Until today, I had to move two boulders with permission from the landowner, but she told me that these people never asked her to put boulders for parking. She goes to Baker Tom. Baker Tom came see me twice. My good friend Tommy Maderas, who lives on Mill Road and his neighbor. She grumbles at them, why you let people park in your yard to go to the beach? All we want is our access to the ocean. We traditionally fish by the tide, we surf by the tide, not by time limits. If the hotels, Honocohau National Park, the beaches down here, they have gates. We go to Honocohau, the gate is shut at night, but there's an opening, public access for us to go pay at night. Down Bayfront, four miles, I even talked with the mayor. The gate is there for the party stop, the car stop going in, but you can still go dive at night and do your gathering at night. But in our own backyard, we don't have that right. Now, this past weekend, I heard about a resolution coming up. I hate to say it, but this is from my now. We've been lied to so many times by these people. I'm willing to sit down at the table, but nothing is guaranteed till it's arrived. Right now, the county is tied up with money. Who's gonna pay to open up the mill, clean the mill site?
Please summarize, sir.
Okay. I'm almost out, mahalo, sir. You know, who's gonna pay for all these big money stuff, make a new trail, and clean down the old mill? When all we want is our original trail back, our beach back, the way things was, before these people moved into our town. Please help us. Mahalo, Nui Loa.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Lyman. And will Mr. Geteras please come forward? No, no. Okay, no pause. We're gonna do this very politely and no pause. You have to just take more time and. Ms. Harden, please go ahead.
Corey Harden, for Sierra Club, Mokonoa Group, in support of Resolution three oh eight, uh, about access to Papiko Beach. Uh, many thanks to Dominic DeGong for his leadership on this difficult issue. This land, as Lito Arquino said, is a big cooliana. We understand there is also a proposal for access through the shroppishare land. We hope council will ensure a public bearing of the pros and cons of that and also preserve Resolution three oh eight as an option. We hope to see access governed by the county, not private landowners, timely resolution at a fair price, access like that at similar beaches, and community participation in maintenance, management, visitor education, and decision-making. Some of that's already happening. We believe Ms. Brickett and Mr. Law deserve some credit. They replaced a hazardous trail with a safe one at their own expense. They opened the trail to the public most days, and they work to keep the trail and beach safe and clean. They consider letting the county take over Mill Road in two thousand. They try to keep the road passable for emergency vehicles, and they offer to do mediation in two thousand and ten. But it's not working to have a couple of people make decisions that affect so many. And we're disappointed that they declined to negotiate with the county about purchase of the trail and road, uh, leaving condemnation as one of the few options and not the easiest. Where the trail experts disagree about whether the public has a legal right to access. Neil Christensen of Independent Hawaiian Surveyors and Chris Ewen, attorney and past county planning department director, have extensive documentation saying yes. But the county prosecutor and the current planning department staff say no, the trail is private property. For Mill Road, there's conflicting evidence about ownership by Ms. Brickett and Mr. Law versus Silverton Camp law owners. Sorting it out in court would take many days and many dollars. This condemnation avoids that. Supporters of the status quo say other public beaches have restrictions like Papiko. But public beaches don't ban strollers, coolers, bicycles, skateboards, and parking. They don't close at the best times for surfing, subsistence fishing, and traditional practices.
Please summarize.
They don't close for a day or forever by decision of one or two people, when families have already been going to a special beach for generations. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harden. Just so the audience knows, I, there's a beep that goes off thirty seconds before your three minutes is up, and that's when I will ask you to please summarize. So, um, the, uh, Iopa Mauna Kea, please take your seat. Mr. Uh, Geteras.
Good morning.
Three oh eight dash twelve.
Yeah, my name is Tony Geteras. I'm here speaking and supporting of three oh eight, eight oh twelve. I live on this street, uh, Mill Road. Lived there since eighty-three. I worked plantation for twenty-nine years. I was also, uh, vice chairman for our unit at the power plant, the one that they're gonna reopen up there. And I can't always believe what's real estate people tell you, or the people by the smokestack, oh, plantation said not gonna open. So. So plantation gave a lot of wrong information to these people. And the planning department and the prosecutor's office, you can't just make the one phone call to the know-all of the plantation. You gotta go do some due diligence and investigate all this kind of stuff. But like, I work plantation like the word is law. Everything they said, okay, I was an ex-marine, so what you say, I'm doing it, I do it. But now we're getting backstab left and right, and we still investigate. And we found the thing from nineteen fifty-two when they made our subdivision. And, uh, it's not just our subdivision, it's Silverton, Anerton, Worthen, Camp. That's the three, the whole Papiko was made in nineteen fifty-six. My house, I'm one of the Luna homes along the road. We have eleven homes along the gold side of the road, along with the Luna guys. Then in this one in fifty-two, they made the subdivision across. That's nineteen more homes that front the road. So the majority of the homes are all on the Mill Road with undivided interest to the road. And there's another twenty behind, so there's fifty-six homes total down there in Papiko. My kids are thirty-something years old. They grew up down at that mill, fishing. They learned to throw net, they learned how to cross net down there, they learn how to surf down there. And now us again, when we found out about all this trouble, I went through some livestock, and I got a letter from nineteen ninety-one from Piti Kailo Plantation, saying how they're getting out of the road, the lights and all this business. They don't wanna deal with it anymore. It's nineteen ninety-one. So us and the Silverton community got together. We got together with Dwight Takamini, and, um, we had to work for the streetlights, sewer laterals, and road resurfacing. Us, the community, did that with Dwight Takamini. We had help from the Department of Business and Economic Development and Tourism. The funding was under the rapist for the energy conservation for rural community facility programs. The grant came from the petroleum violation escrow funds that went to the Big Island Resource Conservation Development, R.C.N.D. Council, whose mission it is to address the rural problems. We did all that. We put new streetlights, we put a new road, we did all that. They say they own the road. Well, how come they're not fixing those streetlights? We just had to fight together, streetlights turned back on, it was off for a year. If they own the road, they're supposed to fix it, but they don't. The community gets together.
Please summarize.
We fixed the road. We own the road. From nineteen fifty-two, undivided interest. Thank you very much. Oh, one last thing. There's seven access roads when they made the subdivision on the one side, one access road on the stop, and all the road. I don't think they have the right to sell any of those roads, but they do, but you make the one phone call to the one guy, oh, yeah, I wrote all that map. So, yeah, 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 that's how I wrote it. Thank you very much. Please.
Thank you, Ms. Geteras. And will Douglas Fratus please come forward? Mr. Iopa Mauna Kea, imposing three oh eight dash twelve.
Uh, good morning, council. Uh, my name is Iopa Mauna Kea. I come from Puna, and I'm here representing myself on behalf of, uh, um, the community and, um, on behalf and in respect to the, um, uh, community at large who's directly involved with this. I oppose this resolution, because I feel that it'll, um, set precedent. Uh, as a landowner myself, it'll set precedent for, um, uh, you know, members of our community to band together and then come and take my land away. So I oppose this with, oh, on heavy heart, I feel of the community going for, uh, feeling right now. Um, and with all due respect to our community, I, I feel that, uh, the owners of that property is, is ready to sit down and, uh, communicate and, um, uh, work out, uh, the differences, uh, within, um, within that set of property. Uh, mahalo.
Thank you, Mr. Mauna Kea. And will Mr. Vincenti come forward? Um, Mr. Fratus?
Good morning. My name is Dougie. I work. Also. I'm, uh.
Would you bring the microphone a little forward to me? Just.
I'm a good friend of, uh, Jim and Charlie at that property. Uh, they helped me a lot, and I do what I can to help them. Uh, I don't wanna get involved in any of the politics in this. It's confusing to me. Uh, I always wanna raise an alarm. Uh, I personally live in Hilo. I do love to serve those, and always was a big part of my life. I just don't see it right how it's, uh, in taking as, uh, land is being taken or. Needs to be taken from her. Um, and in that same matter, how it can affect other people with that kind of situation. That's just my piece on that, and I think for a lot of people. Yeah. I don't, uh, I don't, uh, want that, uh, proposed.
So you're opposing. Thank you, Mr. Fratus. You're welcome. Um, Gail, it says Pi Burn. Please come forward. Mr. Vincenti, go ahead.
My name is Dwight Vincenti. I'm representative of Hawaiian Kingdom. Communication eight five three. The federal government got involved with drugs, but you gotta realize, the federal government consists of only thirteen states and Washington, D.C. In this kingdom, on the morning of January thirteen, eighteen ninety-three, opium was signed into law for the contract slaves, Chinese contract slaves, because they were all hooked on opium. So that's how the kingdom dealt with drugs here. It's a foreign problem brought here by foreigners. And the other point I wanna make, too, the police department under the U.S. Constitution is unconstitutional. It is a military force which violates the U.S. Constitution provision of standing armies. The U, uh, Congress under Article one, section eight, has powers to provide for a navy, to raise and support an army, but no money to that use shall be for a term longer than two years, and to organize, arm, and discipline the state militia, meaning state has no military powers to create any police or military force. But then, you're in the Hawaiian Kingdom. Hawaiian Kingdom has police. So you gotta look at what law you're dealing with. U.S. law doesn't apply here. Hawaiian Kingdom applied. Where in the Hawaiian Kingdom? That's the jurisdiction. Communication eight five three. Land here in Hawaii is either designated crown or government lands. You need a contract from the Hawaiian Kingdom to have ownership, and it's a contract for up to a hundred years now. If you, a tax map key is not ownership, and these lands are not in the state of Hawaii or the county of Hawaii. Imminent domain belongs to the Hawaiian Kingdom, not to the state of Hawaii or the, uh, county. So you gotta always look at where we at. We're in the Hawaiian Kingdom. You have native tenant rights for native Hawaiians. They're the only people that have rights on the mountain to the ocean. The foreigners that came here did not possess that right, even up to this point in time. And there is no public land trust here under the Monroe Doctrine or the Northwest Ordinance of seventeen eighty-seven. These lands belong to the kingdom. It's not open to the world to just step off the boat or a plane and just pretend like they own the place, and it doesn't work that way. On, uh, communication eight five five. Gun control is placed, uh, applied to this kingdom after eighteen eighty-seven, January seventeen, eighteen eighty, uh, eighteen eighty-nine, thirty-three. The first person prosecuted under gun control was a queen, under arms-to-be-licensed under the penal code. Gun control remained here under the penal code up until nineteen fifty-nine. Now it's under Title Ten, chapter one thirty-four. Title Ten is Congress power over the state militia. So it's kinda strange to see gun control under Congress authority under Article one, section eight clause sixteen, which is the state militia. And, uh, you need a permit to acquire from the police department, which is in violation of the U.S. Constitution. But then, you're in the Hawaiian Kingdom. There is no gun control in the Hawaiian Kingdom. So to, to own a gun, you should be able to just go to the store and just buy it. No background checks, nothing. Anyway, Hawaiians, native Hawaiians are considered warriors. We're not under the Second Amendment of the U.S. Constitution. So you see how the separation, kingdom, U.S.? U.S. is only thirteen states and Washington, D.C., so we gotta separate ourselves. Two distinct nations. So at this point in time, um, I'm observing the rights of this kingdom under the Queen's protest of January seventeen, eighteen ninety-three against U.S. Minister Stevens. It has yet to make its way to the U.S. Supreme Court, Article three, section two, clause two. Original but limited jurisdiction, only over U.S. Minister Stevens. And the other one is the Northwest Ordinance. Then you is Washington, D.C., U.S. District Court. It has no force of effect of law over this kingdom, although it was applied to this kingdom as far back as eighteen eighty-seven illegally. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vincenti. Catherine Haas, please come forward. Gail Pi Burn, I see, um, and making a comment regarding Resolution three oh eight dash twelve.
Um, my name is Gail Pi Burn. I've been a resident of the island for twenty-seven years. I bought my house on Mill Road in two thousand. Being a non-native person, I did my best.
Excuse me.
My best.
Thank you.
Being a non-native person, I've done my best to educate myself on cultural issues and thus fully support native Hawaiian gathering rights, including fishing. Personally, I've never gone to Papiko Beach and faced the gate being locked. I see people daily walking down Mill Road to go to the beach. I've yet to see any of those same people returning to their cars with dry clothes, so it appears that they have had access to the beach. Owners have improved and maintained that trail and provide access during the daylight hours. I've seen people parking alongside of the street of Mill Road, which jams up our narrow, one-lane road for the community members' access. The problem I has, I have, is that there is already trash left on the beach and trail. I've seen trees and plants along the trail damaged. I've seen surfers making fires on the beach, smoking pot, drinking alcohol. Also, I've seen surfers. Also, I've seen surfers using the building ruins as a bathroom. Basically, my concerns are the issue of parking and no bathroom facilities. I oppose this resolution in favor of communication between property owners and the community members to work out access and upkeep.
Thank you very much. Noelle, Rodriguez please come forward. Um, Catherine Ross, please.
My name is Catherine Cross. I'm a resident of the Honolulu Coast. About twenty-five years ago is the first time I ever went down to Papiko Beach. And the way we accessed it was um. We parked at the plantation garage. We had ownership because my husband worked at the plantation at the time. And we climbed down the cliff. The trail was very dangerous. We had our children with us that were about seven and nine years old and. After going down and enjoying the beach and then climbing back up. We made a decision we would not use that beach trail again because it was not safe for our children. The debris on the beach was not safe. I'd like to also state that, you know, we all know all public beaches have access to our gates that close, that get locked. And rules that need to be followed. Like no dogs, no open fires, no alcohol, some places allowed with permits. I don't understand why these people are being vilified for doing the same. Access areas on other private lands are even more limited. Think of Monicaia Beach Hotel. The access to that beach is more limited. If you don't get there early enough, forget it, you don't have the parking space. Charlene and Jim created a trail to Papiko Beach with their own labor and their own money. They have allowed people to have a new and safer access to the beach. They should be thanked by the community. Instead, they have been made to feel like villains. Where is our host?
Thank you, Ms. Ms. Cross. Albert Nakati, I think. No, Nakaji, please come forward. Ms. Rodriguez, I should, sorry, Dr. Rodriguez, please go ahead.
Aloha. Um, I am here representing Global Hope. Hawaii Organization for Peace and the Environment. And our concern with peace is social justice. And that's one of the reasons we got involved in this issue. Uh, we've done research. And now we're doing advocacy in behalf of the voiceless and the people who uh can't come to a meeting during the day like this. Um, my club is uh got eight hundred members uh on our uh email list. And uh we've been, you know, doing advocacy and research on these issues for about thirty years. I want to say that once we heard about the arrests of the people who had been uh, you know, going into the land. Uh, that's when we got involved. And uh we did. Uh, efforts over and over again to contact and discuss and have a conversation with Prickett and Waugh. Over these issues. And they were denied repeatedly. And after a while, we uh sent one of our members to Honolulu to really research the issue. We found a map dated eighteen seventy-seven and then on top of that, a photograph dated eighteen seventy-seven. Giving indication that this is in fact uh fits on the Highways Act of eighteen ninety-two as a public road. We also want to call attention to uh the county document, the nineteen seventy-nine. County of Hawaii Shoreline Public Access Inventory. That describes the um. Public access as going from Mill Road to Papiko Landing to Silverton Subdivision and private lands. And this is a document of the County of Hawaii done by the former Planning Director of the County of Hawaii and the former Deputy Plan uh County uh Planning Director. And we spoke recently with the uh one of the authors of this thing and he said. That yes, they had researched it fully. I uh want to submit that we have uh five thousand. Three hundred and seventy-three signatures on a petition here. We had originally wanted to simply have a thousand. And it was so easy for people to get signatures on this petition because this issue is a very powerful one in the larger community. The petition read, we we request that the uh trail down to Papiko Mill Beach be fully restored as a public right-of-way. With the full rights and privileges of public access granted by law. Papiko Beach is and always has been a valued community asset. Please remove all privatized impediments to the Big Island community's access to our beach.
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez.
Thank you.
All right. Um, Niels Christensen, please come forward. Dr. Nakaji.
Thank you, Ms. Christensen. I'm generous. Uh, my name is Albert Nakaji and I speak today with regard to Resolution three zero eight dash twelve. I speak neither in favor of nor in opposition to the subject of resolution, but I ask that members. Of this committee consider issues relating to the proposed acquisition. And public use of the trail and beach that has become the subject of considerable controversy. I'll summarize and just iterate the first and what I consider to be the most important point. Uh, you have copies or you should have a copy of my testimony before you and I trust that you'll read that uh when you have more time, so. Let me say that most important of this issue, I believe that the committee members should realize that the issue before you. Is really an example of an out of control lack of fundamental communication between the property owners and property users. It is entirely a civil matter that has not been subjected to the court uh customary customary course. Of resolving disputes specifically through informal discussions, then through formalized mediation, then through the judicial system. At no time that I'm aware of have the property own property owners and complainants, and I say complainants for lack of a better descriptor. Uh, ever had an effectively facilitated meeting or a series of meetings. Uh, to fully understand and appreciate the issues that are faced by both parties in order that they might work together. To come up with a solution to the perceived problem. I'm not aware of that ever having happened. Meetings that have been held have not been productive. Uh, resulted instead of shouting and name-calling and emotional contest, very non-productive. Productive discussions have not been held, but there is already intent to use the legislative process to resolve an entirely civil matter. Through very, very drastic actions. Eminent domain is a very drastic action. It is not a like to be taken lightly at all. This, my honorable members, is very premature and ill advised. Please read the rest of my issues I've iterated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nakaji. Um, Elisa Michael, please come forward. Mr. Christensen, you may go ahead.
Uh, my name is Niels Christensen. Um, I'm a land surveyor, a geographer. Um, but mainly I'm a very strong advocate of of water sports and water activities. Um, I've participated in many water sports and am a member of a canoe club. So my uh background gives me sort of a unique viewpoint of this. Uh, from the land uh law side, I'm not a lawyer, but I deal in land issues all day. And from a person that uses the ocean every day. I understand the importance to a large segment of the community of the right to access the ocean. If you're one of us, you understand that. If you're not, you've seen how fanatic they are about it. It's it's an important part of our psychology. Um, so that that's what brought me to look at this issue. And I got involved two and a half years ago when uh the landowners escalated this by arresting. Six young people for going down this trail in the middle of the day to go surfing. And that was an escalation. They've been doing other things, but that was the first time I heard it was a demonstration as a result of that. And so for two and a half years, I've tried every avenue suggested to try to find a way to do this in a peaceful way. And we've had three community meetings where this has been discussed. So so this isn't the issue that hasn't been discussed publicly in the past. Uh, we've tried to communicate with the landowners, that's Prickett Waugh. Um, and Dominic, thank you so much. He tried to facilitate that at one point. And they absolutely refused to talk to us about this. Um, so we've tried. It's not that we haven't tried those avenues. The only avenue left to us really was what this gentleman suggested was to go to court. And it turns out when, and we've talked to many lawyers, I've invested money in that and tried to get it to court. But um when an attorney looks at the opposition, which are people that are very wealthy and. The answer is you better have two or three hundred thousand dollars if you want to pursue this in court. And that's not available to to us, our side of this issue. This is very similar to the issue about the water. This is an issue, they keep talking about private property rights. Well, private private property rights are only certain rights, okay? If you have a deed, you only have certain rights. I don't care how warranty is or how he simply is. It it may even have some things written into the deed that says uh exceptions to, together with items, okay?
Please summarize.
So you don't get all rights. And this easement, there is an easement over this trail now. And it's not a written easement. But neither is the right to use a lot of the uh Mauna Loa Highway. There's no written title about the state or the county holds. Red road, a lot of that is not a written title, okay? We, the public, have rights as well as the private property, the same as in the case of the Honolulu Beach. We're not asking permission. It's not only our right.
Thank you, sir. Larry Garing, please come forward. Uh, Lisa Michael, you may begin. Uh, everyone, please pull that microphone really close to you. So we can get it recorded and we can hear you. If it feels like it's uncomfortably close, it's probably correct. Thank you.
My name's Elisa Michael. I uh, my husband, Don, and I were caretakers um for Charlene Prickett and Jim Waugh. For fifteen months during two thousand ten and two thousand eleven. I'd like to address some of the misinformation that we've read in the news and seen on the news programs. In all that time that we've had, we had daily communication with them. Either by email, phone, or in person. Never did they suggest that that trail would be closed. And I read in the news many times that they were threatening to close the trail and I never heard them say that. Uh, Jim had planted so many uh native trees along the trail. Surfers, people would go down the trail and they'd break those trees off. And I asked Jim if he would get discouraged. And he said, I planted two trees for everyone may break, hoping that one will be left. No, I don't get discouraged. The other issue is that people are saying the rules there are unreasonable. The rules are the same as when you go to Richardson. I've read the rules there. They are the same. No fires, no alcohol, no animals. They are the same and same in Kona. So the misinformation, I believe, has gotten a lot of people in the community. Uh, really worked up thinking that they're going to lose this beach and that was never suggested by these people. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Michael. Um. Chris Ewan. Please come forward. Larry Garing, you may begin.
Good morning, Council. Thank you, Larry Garing, Gail. And I want to thank the other the other test players too. This is democracy in action. I love it. Mr. Aketa, uh, I'm sorry. Communication eight fifty-one, Bill three oh eight, public improvements. Mr. Aketa, I think you're daily eight dollars short. You've had eight years to add this line. You're taking nine hundred bucks a week plus benefits plus expense account from the council. The for the improvements up in Upper Hawaiian New Inuyi. You mentioned a pedestrian walkway. How many people there going to really benefit? Bicycle travel, there again. At six hundred thousand dollar cost, how many people that really going to benefit? I think the money is better spent and more appropriately spent on downtown, like New Inuyi and other streets in your district. This uh proposal expenses about as ridiculous as the Kilauea. Repair project proposed by Mr. Anishi and worship by Mr. Lee. What downtown streets are worse than Calhades? And evidently, you folks are proud of them. Because you don't ever allocate any money for downtown repairs. And uh downtown street repairs and that's a pretty sad legacy. So it's another example of tunnel vision and uh. I often wonder if the street in terms of your houses, if they need repair. Probably not. Communication eight fifty-three, Resolution three oh eight dash twelve, imminent domain. I would agree that if if you, you know, obviously there's a lot of controversy around this. And if you can't get to the table and and agree, sit down and agree upon access to the beach. There have been, uh, when I read in a new email last night, maybe it's not a new one, but the first time I read it. But they've come up with another proposal, the owners, and it seems to be a plausible one about another trail. Uh, which is outside of their house and and vice versa. They can't see the trail. So anyhow, if you uh, if they can't sit down and and agree on things, yeah, imminent domain has to be. I campaigned on that issue from the very beginning. And uh I have no problem with that. It it gets gets things moving. And uh, Mr. You're gone, I apologize, with all due all due respect. You've had twelve years to uh make progress on this. And there again, while you're taking nine hundred bucks a week plus benefits plus an expense account from the council or from the county. Uh, nothing's been done. And there's uh. A lot of disrepair. Yeah, that's another issue. And one of the people at the meeting in Papiko also asked why, why the county let it get to this point? It's not, didn't happen overnight, you know? So it's been dragging on and on and on. And uh I mentioned this because new councils coming in should be aware of these situations. And when property comes up for sale. Uh, and there's any kind of access or whatever that uh the public can utilize, then. Do something about it. Get an easement, buy it, whatever. But don't let it get to this point in time that we're at right now with this particular beach act says. Communication eight fifty-four, Resolution three oh nine dash twelve, Miss Ford. I don't know how many overpriced coffee machines we need, but uh. I don't know why, once again, the county can't train a couple of maintenance people to learn how to repair these machines. It's not rocket science. So you train them to repair it and buy a couple of machines, buy machines for less than two thousand. These machines can be purchased for less than two thousand. Train a couple of maintenance people, have them travel around the island, keep them in condition. And then that's plus three percent, you're you're paying three cents per coffee for fifteen thousand coffees. Then how much does it go to? I estimate that you've spent, or you overspent about half a million dollars on this cycle alone alone. And it it just keeps adding up and adding up. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Garing. Uh, Donald Michael, please come forward. Mr. Ewan, you may begin.
Hi, good morning, members of the council. My name is Chris Ewan and I want to thank you for taking up this important issue. I want to speak in favor of the Resolution three oh eight dash twelve to acquire a public beach access to Papiko Beach. Uh, and I want to mostly talk about the eminent domain itself. The council is very familiar with using uh the power to acquire private property for public use. It's something the council has done many times to buy rights of way for roads. Uh, the government uses it for sewer lines, uh for water lines, even the utility companies have the power of eminent domain to put in power lines. So it's something that's been a power of government in the United States since the very founding of the United States and long before. It's not a, it's not basically a hostile action. This may be the first time that it's been used by the county strictly to acquire a pedestrian right-of-way. But this is the kind of thing that the government is supposed to do. There's actually a state law on Chapter one fifteen. That says the county is supposed to use eminent domain to acquire rights of way to the beach for the public when there are no other ways of doing that. So it's like any other power. It's something that has to be used carefully. It has to be used wisely, but it is. Uh, a power that that you have that you're supposed to use. When in a case like this, the public really has a cherished resource that they're trying to get to. Uh, more, the typical way that the the county has acquired new public access has been. In connection with a landowner applying for land use permits, like a rezoning or an S and M permit. And then that's been imposed as a condition of the land's approval. But in many cases where there's there's piece of property that the public may want to get across to get to the ocean. But in many cases where there's piece of property that the public may want to get across to get to the ocean, that the landowner isn't applying for anything that needs that kind of approval, maybe just being kept in agricultural use. And in those situations, there may be no way except eminent domain to get the rights of way that the public wants. So this would be, in fact, a good precedent for many situations that do exist around the island where there isn't a zoning change or other kind of land use approval that is available to obtain a public access. There have been some discussion of says that there should be mediation, that there should be maybe another alternative. But I want to say, that's always the best thing. That's always the best thing, that there be discussions and negotiations. Okay, thank you. But just in the terms of the process of eminent domain, I think that it's very important that the council go ahead and have a public hearing on this issue. Go ahead with this process. And the process can be terminated really at any time, even after the filing of the lawsuit to take the property, which would come after at least a half dozen more meetings in this council.
Thank you, Mr. Ewan. John Cross, please come forward. Mr. Donald Michael, you may begin.
Good morning, my name is Donald Michael. I'd just like to say I'm a guest.
Mr. Michael, I'm starting to interrupt. Please pull that much closer to me.
Sorry, much better. Okay. My name is Donald Michael. Like my wife said, we were caretakers for approximately one year. Two years of duty with the Jaimon, Charlene Prigot's property. Has seen many things go down on the trail. And ninety percent of people I go down there are great. Of course, you're going to have some that aren't, but... I was going on, looking at the proposal as it was put out, and there were a couple of items in there that kind of, I didn't disagree with. One was about the survey that was done on the beach, who was unauthorized and completely, that's either there, that's up to you guys to decide. And another about five thousand signature petition, somebody I talked to. And they said, oh yeah, that was a class project for us to go out and get signatures on petition for a sociology project. But I think people are going to use whatever means necessary to get the ends that they deem necessary. And like again, I said, not here nor there. Jim and Charlene have just done a tremendous job on that trail. The property, landscaping, and to put a ten-foot easement down that trail and leave the rest of the trail open, I think would be just, would be a bad idea. And I think this issue needs to be looked into deeper. More conversation, both sides. County, the landowners, the advocates for beach access. I mean, there's always been beach access. They've never closed a trail. They've never said they're going to close a trail. Except for the one day a year that they legally needed to do it. One day out of the year, to have a trail like that maintained by them for people who use beach, it almost seems ludicrous to me to install an eminent domain. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Michael. Jean? I'm sorry, I cannot read this. Something close to that?
Noi.
Oh, my goodness. Okay, please come forward, Jean. And John Cross, you may begin.
Yes, I'm John Cross. I represent myself. I also represent the former owner of this land. Seabrook Company, found a future. In this resolution I approach it, I've counted twenty-seven whereas's within this resolution. And I'm going to go through a couple of them and respond to them. Their first whereas, this beach is an artifact of man and machinery. It is not a native natural beach. And whereas number four, I've handed out a picture with an overlay. And this picture is from nineteen twenty-three. Well, prior, I mean, let's move forward in time to about eighty-four, when I started working for the plantation, there was no trail. It went down that slope. There was none at all. How to get to the beach was on the front, the front of the mill. You climb down the ladder, you jumped onto the eeli eeli stones, and there you were. Right now, the beach is about a hundred and fifty feet back from that original site where the community and the employees used to fish, as Colin said. But you cannot use that path anymore. It is gone. But Jim and Charlene built the trail. And that trail is shown in red. That's the current trail that people use to go down to the beach. This, this shoreline public access is precursory. It is right. It does not have much meat to it. And it was never acted upon. Second page, your twelfth whereas, the deed of the road. I've provided for you copies of deeds, and we did everything we were supposed to do. We gave it over undivided interest in the roads that accessed the lots of Silver Creek Camp. We did not give over undivided interest to no road. It was never the intention of the subdivision to do that. It was the side roads that we did it over. And you can see that in the two documents. So one of the documents is a lot that has no road, has an easement. No ownership, and it is no road, grants an easement. But those on the inside, they get ownership of the road, in the side road. Over here is a palapala, going back.
Please, sir, please summarize.
Thank you. The Christensen survey was an egregious act of trespass. He should not have been there. He was not allowed to be there. Who was allowed access to this beach? The people that follow the rules. Who is being denied access? Those that bring the dogs, those that burn the trash, those that throw rocks at monk seals, those that jump the fence, those that steal the copper. So this is for them. You're going to allow access for them. This is a flawed document. And before you process, go on the process of eminent domain, you should not base your judgment on a flawed resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Cross.
Ms. Chair. Okay, Mr. Cross, are you going to stay here?
Yes.
Okay, so you can call it back up.
Thank you, Mr. Anishia. James Law, please come forward. And Mr. Enoi, and I apologize for not being able to read that. Please begin.
My name is Jean Enoi. I've lived in Hilo for twenty-eight years. I am a retired farmer living on Kaaviki Road. I've been with Waianaku Kaaviki Community Association Board Member for many years. And my wife Cindy Enoi has been the ongoing president. I ask that you consider a proposal that you, Charlene Prigot and Jim Law want to present. My wife and I have known Charlene and Jean for four or five years, and been involved in the community activities along the Hamakoko Coast, including the Rural South Hilo Community Association. Charlene and Jean have been unjustly accused and soloed out by a number of people. They've been labeled as self-serving malioners who allege denying local access to the small beach resides at the bottom of their property. This is not the case as we see it. They have been, they have made efforts to maintain a property of their home and grounds while giving access to the public who love this, love this area. Also, after they put the gate up and stuff like that, and put the rocks to block off the parking down there, the county put up no parking signs out on the highway where they used to park trucks and stuff, double park. Now the people cannot park on the highway to walk down. So they're parking down the road. So the county or the state, whoever put up the sign, is not helping the access area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Enoi. Keith Nels, please come forward. Mr. Wong, you may begin.
Yes, I'm Jim Law, and I'm speaking with regard to the resolution three oh eight, twelve. I'd like to talk about a few of the points that are contained in the resolution. Whereas's number four is dealing with public has used paths for many decades. This is, there's unlikely to be a single square foot of land on this TMK that has not seen the impact of a human foot at one time or another. This was the heart of a sugar plantation that lasted on this site for nearly a hundred and fifty years and was home to more than a hundred permanent residents as late as nineteen sixty. However, this human activity has come as a result of permitted access, not as a result of public access. All through these years, the sugar companies before and the present owner now have assiduously and regularly closed the property for a minimum of twenty-four hours as prescribed by state law to prevent the public from, as they said in those days, from gaining passways, easements, and/or rights of way over or within this land or any portion or portions thereof at any time. I also would like to talk about the shoreline public access inventory, resolution six one. The reference inventory was simply a study made by a consultant of the county. Many of the ideas it contained were never acted upon by the county or by the affected landowners. There is no evidence presented by the consultant that the shoreline access shown at Papai Ko even met his own criteria for inclusion, or was anything more than an existing private road. It's not even clear that the consultant actually saw the road because part of it was closed and fenced a year before the report was written. The, I think that's a critical error in that with respect to this road. And it's something that should be pointed out here today. This is a lightweight document that was prepared for the county, not by the county. And it was never acted upon by any of the department's concern. The gate and the fence that was in place since nineteen seventy-eight is the same gate and fence that when we bought the property, we replaced with our own wall and our own gate. So we haven't brought anything new to the site. It's a site that was closed off before.
Please summarize.
There are many other items that I could go into in this resolution because it is littered with many, many errors, errors of fact. I guess my sense of a resolution that has twenty-seven whereas's is that they better be facts that are being presented as whereas's, not rumors, not innuendo, not maybes, but actual facts. And that's not the case with this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Wong. Charlene Prigot, please come forward. And Kate Nels, you may begin.
Hello, my name is Keith Nels, but they know me as Brother Skids. And I'm here behalf of Basic Image. Last year, in two thousand and eleven, we went to meet in Papai Ko. And we heard that issue of this land thing that was going on of access and things like that. So we decided to go down there for a year. We were down there every week cleaning, giving ourselves community service to see if we could find people that would like to step up in the community and teach what is etiquette, what is right, what we should do. And we went down. And within a year, we seen people breaking plans. And all the people that are saying about they want this space back, we seen not one, but there were two. So after a year, we decided with all the politics and things like that, that we should move on. But I'm here today to say that it is owned by Charlene and Jim. They have laws that the county and the state, that they follow every part. And the problem that I see in the issue is a lot of people are going upon this issue because of their hate for whatever has been said to them, for whatever wrongdoing they do. And I just told them that, you know, we're going to do our best to do what we can do to make this place a better place. But I just here today to say that if you guys ever, ever have this property, don't even take it until you have somebody that can commit to be there, to be a caretaker, and a person to educate the community, the taking, and our visitors about how it is to take care of Aina, how to respect everyone. So that's what it is, like Amal with Pui Kau, Hona Lea, Hakalau. We built these parks with community service, with love. But we there every week to educate. The Chupun set you free. And like she says, as a partition, I went to Bank of Hawaii last year, and this security guard came up to me and says, hey, bro, you surf bad. Yeah, I surf, and what's up? He said, hey, you can sign this partition. I said, what is this partition about? Oh, the people down Papai Ko not letting nobody go in. Nobody been going to the place. And I said, brother, I go down there every week, it's open every day. And who gave this paper to you? And he said, well, a lady, she dropped it off and she told me this. So if you got five thousand partitions, believe me, if anybody's telling me that you're going to shut somebody's land and then I'll let you go in with fear, I would probably sign it too. But the whole thing is here today, is we just here to set an example, to make a resolution where for everything to work out, everything ought to be porno, everything ought to be right. No one here says lead by example. That's all I'm here today to say is, hey, if you need our help to help people understand how to do it, that's what we do. But we shouldn't hate anybody, and we should do it right. Thank you.
Oh, thank you so much. Blaze, Blaze Belima, please come forward. Mr. Prigot, you've got three minutes.
Well, I'm Charlene Prigot. I'm Jim's wife and co-owner of the Papai Ko Mill Property. I would like to walk you through packets that you have there from me. And I'm speaking with regards to the highways act that suggests in this resolution that there may be a right, a public right to an overland access across our land. Two government agencies, the Na'alaheli Trails Researchers of the DLNR and your own county planning department, both imminently competent to read maps and old documents, had examined the documents brought forward by Surveyor Niels Christensen. And they have all written opinions that there is no substance to a claim of an historic trail. The first thing I show you is a letter from the Na'alaheli dated April four, twenty eleven, to Mr. Niels Christensen. It is our opinion that this road was built by the Onamea Sugar Company for their use to access their boat land. And I have for you a picture. This is the picture that was submitted. And this is the road or the ramp that Na'alaheli is addressing. It is a ramp that connects the mill buildings together. And there is another building off the picture here. And we know that from other pictures, so I've shown you that. This, this road was built from the sea. This is back in eighteen seventy-eight, before cars. So everything came in by sea, even the smallest items. We, we have documents of what they shipped up from Hona Lea. So this is an effort for, to get from building to building. This road does not go up to the highway. We have pictures up above this road. And so this is, this doesn't even connect to the public highway, which did exist in. It was first suggested in a newspaper article by Mr. Niels Christensen that this road, this squiggle here, this road, was in fact our trail. But I think that's, I think they backed off from that now. Here's our trail way over here. I've marked for you in red the approximate route of our trail. It's nowhere in the vicinity of this road addressed by Na'alaheli in this letter. Also, Na'alaheli, along with this letter, I haven't given you this, included, as you see on the letter, it says there's sea-attached excerpt from a report on landings and wars. I have that here. It says, "The following is a list of all the private landings which we have inspected with a brief description of each as we have found it, showing its location, particularly with relation to its accessibility to public roads." And then they go and talk about Hunaloo landing out in Kau, and they give all the description. And down at the bottom, they say, "Good government road." And then on the description of Papai Ko, please summarize. They say, they tell all about it, and there's no mention of a public road. And they say, "Plantation has no schedule of charges. Little, very little outside freight is handled over this landing, and only by special arrangement." So you see before you another letter from the Na'alaheli in answer to another question- in answer to another question by Mr. Christiansen. It says, "What was the trail used for and by whom before the mill was built?" Na'ala Hailei says, "Examination of the same sketch mentioned above does not show a trail."
Thank you, Ms. Pritchard.
And there is lastly, a letter from the county, which I hope you can read. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pritchard. Carrie Glass, please come forward. Blaze Delima, you may speak.
Thank you, ma'am. Chairwoman and members of the council. My name is Blaze Delima. I'm here representing myself and I'm also here to support Resolution number three oh eight dash twelve relating to the acquisition of easement and property by eminent domain to provide a pedestrian public access system to the beach at Papai Ko. I'm a fifth-generation resident of Hilo and for as long as residents can, able to recall, the public has always used the same trail and access to reach the beach at Papai Ko. It is unfortunate that there is a dispute about the public access. Litigation about the public access would cost both time and money from limited county resources. The delay to our citizens' enjoyment of scarce recreational resources and opportunities are also priceless. I urge the immediate condemnation of the land needed for the public access to bring this matter to an expedited resolution for the public interest. Malo.
Thank you, Ms. Delima. Sharon Monroe, please come forward. Mr. Glass, you may begin.
Thank you. My name's Carrie Glass. I'm a resident of Papai Kao and I am speaking against the Resolution three oh eight dash twelve. I feel this is absolutely a hostile action to take away the rights that the landowners Jim and Charlene have to take, to give something, to give access to something that already exists. They opened the trail. They widened it. They paved part of it because it was, to stabilize it. They opened it, you know, twelve hours a day. People can come, they can go. Hundreds of people have traveled it with no issues. Some few people obviously don't like the same rules that apply, you know, at Jim and Charlene's on their trail that the state does on their beaches. And I think it's a shame that it's gotten this far and I am totally against it. I think the resolution, as has been already noted, is flawed. There, you know, the wherethes may this, may that. I think it needs to be, if there is gonna be a resolution, it needs to be solid, not based on dislike of people, which a lot of this seems to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glass. Raquel Dow, please come forward. Susan Monroe, you may begin.
My name's Susan Monroe and I'm speaking against this resolution. I, I know that there's a landowner who has a way to get down to that beach just south of Jim and Charlene's and he's always had it closed. And so, no one has ever caused any ruckus going through there. Jim and Charlene, when they bought the property, did what I thought was an amazing thing to build a trail and make it open to the public. And what did they get for it? They get kicked in the teeth and they have to come here and defend their own private property rights. It's very disappointing and I hope that this resolution fails.
Thank you, Ms. Monroe. Eric Oreski, Raquel, you may begin. And get really close to the microphone. Thank you.
My name is Raquel Dow. I live in Papai Kao and I'm speaking for myself. I'm here in opposition to this Resolution three oh eight dash twelve. I've known Jim and Charlene for five years and despite what you may hear from a few people, I've been impressed with their stewardship of the Aina and their determination to keep the trail to the beach open despite intense harassment, hostility and provocation from a few individuals. Yes, they set some rules. As you've already heard, they're the same rules that are common to almost every beach park on the island. There were some limits to access. Many beach parks have gates and are closed during the night. Wouldn't it be ironic if the county took the beach at trail and then established basically the same rules that Jim and Charlene have been trying to enforce for eighteen years? I strongly doubt that the reduction of conflict wished for, hoped for in Section twenty would result from an eminent domain action. Rather, it might have just the opposite effect, encouraging this kind of egregious hostile behavior in order to encourage the council's future willingness to initiate eminent domain against other landowners. I think this resolution sets a dangerous precedent for the county and is likely to intensify conflicts. And there is another way. A far better solution would be to pursue the law's offer to sell the county a portion of their land for a new trail under the Open Space Program. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Dow. Before I let you start, Mr. Oreski, council members, we have one, two, three, four. We have five more testimonies. And I was gonna stop below forty-five. But we have five more testimonies and it's up to the council. I was gonna break for lunch to make sure we all got back before one o'clock. We must start Mr. Pilago's meeting at one o'clock because we have somebody on the Eastern Seafore who's waiting to testify. We either take a shorter lunch or we stop after Mr. Oreski's testimony and then make these other four people come back. Your choice.
Now, Chair, you've got fifteen minutes to twelve. Then we cover all of you.
Yes, it will.
I think we should finish the testifying.
Okay. All right. Mr. Oreski, hold on. Charlene, I'm sorry, Catherine Kennedy. And before I, Ms. Nels.
I had a meeting at eleven-thirty. So, I am going to step out for the last fifteen minutes.
Okay.
I have no problem if it continues, but I've already fifteen minutes. I apologize.
Thank you.
Real quick, you could ask the remaining testifiers if they're gonna come back anyway. If they are, then maybe we can just reconvene. But if they're, but they have time commitments unless it's called.
Mr. Onechi.
Well, just let the public know that. So, that means that, I mean, hopefully we'll take the five more testifiers. Then you can break for lunch. When we come back at one, then we're gonna have Mr. Pilago's committee.
Right.
So, that means the finance committee will be postponed until after.
Yes, that is correct. I will recess after this last testifier.
And so, what time do you think finance will start up again?
I have no idea how long Mr. Pilago's.
At least an hour.
Uh, hold on. Mr. Pilago, I think where you were gonna go on your meeting, take your first item with the gentleman on the East Coast, recess your meeting, come back to finance again, correct?
Okay. So, maybe like thirty minutes. I mean, just to kinda let the public know.
Thirty to forty.
Yeah.
Thirty to forty minutes for Mr. Pilago's thing. But I will recess before we leave here.
Okay.
Until after Mr. Pilago starts.
So, the public should know like maybe about one-thirty, one-forty-five, finance should start up again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Onechi. Mr. Oreski, Catherine Kennedy, please come forward. She's gone. Okay.
She was in support of.
All right. Yes, she was in support. Jennifer Ruggles, please come forward. Mr. Oreski, please go ahead.
Thank you very much, council, for taking the time to listen to our testimony here. My name is Eric Orseski. It's all right. You did very well, though. I'm here behalf of support of Resolution three oh eight dash twelve. I know there's a lot of discrepancies between the two parties. I'm also a member of Global Hope and facilitated in the first public meeting as well as getting the signatures for the petitions. It was not only a university-based club group. We also do outreach to the community to have resolution of these issues, such as beach public access. And I find it very important for us to make a peaceful resolution here on the fact that it's not just using eminent domain to take away land. It's to ensure that we have this access, not only right now, but for future use. Hypothetically speaking, we could have new landowners that completely shut it, shut it down. So, it's imperative that the voice of the people are heard through their representative public servant, such as yourself. And I want to thank you for taking the time to listen to our concerns and strongly, and I strongly recommend that you support Resolution three oh eight dash twelve.
Thank you, Mr. Orseski. Gilbert Kuoli. Okay, Jennifer Ruggles, please begin. Push the bar at the bottom.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm a member of Global Hope. I am in support of this, this resolution. And I think that it's crucial that we go through with this public hearing because there has been a disproportionate representation of the community here. People opposed to this resolution, it seems like it is their position that there is not a problem with access, with access has been provided and that there's no problem. But there is, there is a problem. Five thousand people signed a petition saying that they want public access because something does need to change. So, last year, we had a public meeting in which we personally invited the landowners to start dialogue. On a board, we had listed every possible problem the landowners could have, such as trash, vandalism, et cetera. And we wanted to be able to address it as a community with them and they didn't come. So, after we confirmed that the community does actually want a public trail there, we sat down and we tried to sit down with the landowners several times so that we could talk about it. And they refused. We saw Igdon Lake Gong and he proceeded to invite the landowners to a meeting which he would mediate to discuss solutions and they refused to come. We met with Canoe and he did the same and they declined. So, and now we're at this point. And throughout this entire process, landowners have ignored the issue and the concerns. So, I commend them for finally coming down and taking this seriously. And I look forward to starting some sort of dialogue. But until then, we need to keep doing what the will of the people has been. And I urge that we continue with the public hearing and just see where this goes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ruggles. Carrie Marks, please come forward. Mr. Kuoli, please identify yourself for the microphone.
Hello, I'm.
Sir, would you get that microphone really close? Thank you.
I feel partly responsible for what's happening over here today. I used to work for the sugar company for twenty years. I started off with Monicaia Sugar and then ended up at Hilo Co's processing company. And in that years of working with the plantation, I was a heavy equipment operator. We did everything and anything. Business. Picture of, of the sugar mill was in, in business. After the sugar mill closed, kids had access to go down to the mill illegally. And they used to go down and do whatever they do, they surfing and everything. But the thing is that they were making fire into the mill. So, that's where the fire department had to come in and turn the fire off. So, now for liability wise, for the plantation, you had to do something. This is how it used to look. There was no trail. This is our trail that we had to do, we had to make. The reason why we had to make the trail was because of liability. We had to put in, plantation had to put in tents. For liability for keeping the kids out. So, now I feel partly responsible for this because everyone talking about public access. There was no access. There was no trail. We had to go in and bulldoze it. And you can see how steep the terrain was. But yet, we had to make a trail to go down there to prevent some. So, now you have a tough job too. I don't know what you guys are gonna do, but I wish I didn't get involved in this. But I feel partly responsible for this. I'm a landowner myself and I don't want nobody to come in and condemn my land to make public access. So, I hope you, as the county council, make a right decision and I hope it's a good one. I thank you very much for my time, for your time and I appreciate everything. Thank you. And also, before I close.
We've got thirty seconds.
I'm with the Basic Image Crew, Paka Crew. We clean Honalei plus Hakalau. So, whatever decision you make, somebody's gonna have to take this place. So, I hope it's all right. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Kuoli. Are you going to be around this afternoon when this starts so we can ask questions? Okay, thank you so much. Thank you. Ms. Marks, you may begin.
Good morning, everybody. I wasn't going to testify, but now I am because of what the people said about the petitions. This is the petition. It was not passed out as a Global Hope class project. I picked up this petition from, it was either Noelle or Jennifer at the Earth Day in April. I passed out many, many pages of this petition and had it signed myself. I was never a part of Global Hope. I've never attended a class with UH. This is a community process. They got five thousand signatures. There are only ten slots on this. That means that if every single one was filled out, they had five hundred of these sheets of paper filled out. So, I take great offense that they would put out that this is some sort of class project. This has major community support from not only Global Hope, but the entire community. And if you're going to say that, well, they didn't know what they were signing, it's pretty simple. It reads to county and state officials, "The beach belongs to the public. The trail to the beach belongs to the public. We request, we request that the trail down to Papai Ko Mill Beach be fully restored as public right of way with full rights and privileges of public access granted by law. Papai Ko Beach is and always has been a valued community asset. Please remove all privatized impediments to the Big Island community's access to our beach. Mahalo." It's pretty straightforward. If they got duped, if five thousand people got duped into signing this, then that's on them. Their signature. Okay, that's what I have to say about that. Beyond that, oh, that's enough. I'll come back to the other committee members. Follow.
Thank you, Ms. Marks. Okay. What I'm gonna do right now is put us into, I believe it's recess until after Mr. Pilago recesses his meeting. Then we will come back. We estimate at about one-forty, one-forty-five, something in that neighborhood. So, right now, we're in recess.